Twenty twenty four, the Board of Trustees convened the Brooklyn Borough Public Hearing Regarding CUNY Wide Issues and/or the Items on the Calendar Agenda for the April eighth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees Meeting. Seventy-four people registered to testify and fifty-three people presented testimony in person. Forty-six people submitted written testimony. Speakers included members of the PSC, adjunct professors and employees of the colleges, who opposed the proposed fiscal savings plans, including cuts to adjuncts, proposed changes to CUNY bylaws that are perceived to affect shared governance and increased class sizes. Speakers advocated for a fully funded contract, competitive salaries, and infrastructure improvements. Members of the PSC also encouraged the university to increase the number of full-time faculty and increase adjunct salaries and the disproportionate amount of lecture hires over professional staff hires. Testimonies also included support for free speech, a call for the CUNY administration to participate in boycotts divestment and sanctions against Israel, while other speakers expressed concern about antisemitism and safety of Jewish students on CUNY campuses. One person submitted testimony regarding bullying and recommendations for an anti-bullying policy and a dedicated central office to handle workplace complaints. As always, the testimony has been shared with the board and the chancellery as well as posted through trustees' website. Trustees have been busy since we met last. As you know, March was Women's History Month and the chancellor held the annual CUNY Women's Conference Week. This year, Trustee Myra Lenaros Garcia spoke at the launch of the conference, which was entitled "Women: Leading and Mobilizing Our Communities." Trustee Dumboya also presented remarks during the conference week. Vice Chair Wilken and trustee Cortez Vasquez also attended the events. Vice Chancellor Wilken, trustee Arvenides, and trustee Dumboya attended the CUNY Caucus Weekend, including the annual luncheon. Let me thank you all for doing that. Vice Chair Wilken also attended the Twenty-Sixth Annual CUNY SUNY Model Senate Project. And trustees have been visiting campuses. Vice Chair Wilken visited LaGuardia Community College recently, and trustees Berger and Cortez Vasquez took a tour of City Tech last week. Trustees Arvenides, Cortez Vasquez, and Vrazani will be touring the College of Staten Island next week. Several trustees have scheduled additional visits in May and will update you next month about these visits. And the secretary and deputy secretary to the board have also been very busy. They have both presented recently at the Association of Governing Boards, that's AGB, Board Professionals Conference, and National Conference on Trusteeship. And our own secretary to the board, Gail Horowitz, has been named the chair of the AGB Board Professionals Leadership Group. Congratulations, Gail. Chancellor.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, and welcome, everyone. I hope that you got outside in time to catch a little glimpse of today's solar eclipse. It was good to see that several of our campuses organized safe viewing parties and related events. So, a lot of good news to share about CUNY. Let me start with something that bears repeating. CUNY is tremendously grateful to our generous benefactors. We cannot overstate the positive impact they have on our students and the system. Last month, we celebrated the largest gift ever made to this university, a six, a hundred and sixteen point two million dollar donation from the New York Mets owners, Steven and Alexandra Cohen. This unprecedented award will be used to create the Cohen Career Collective at LaGuardia Community College, a cutting-edge workforce training center that will significantly advance our career and technical training capacity and help us to prepare many thousands of New Yorkers for good jobs in high-growth sectors. We extend our sincere gratitude to the Cohens for helping CUNY to lift New York City even higher. Another impactful gift to CUNY came from the Mellon Foundation, which is awarding five million dollars to extend our unique Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative, also known as BRESI. This is an outgrowth of the work that began in twenty twenty and will enable CUNY to launch New York's first dedicated graduate degree program in Black Race and Ethnic Studies, which will be based out of the Graduate Center. I want to acknowledge Senate Majority Leader Charles Schumer and Senator Kristin Jullibren and the members of our city's congressional delegation, who secured more than fifteen point three million dollars in appropriations for our colleges in the recent omnibus spending bill. This fund will cover tangible improvements, such as the renovation of the Alumni House at City College for use as a workforce development center, upgrades to STEM labs at the College of Staten Island, a cybercrime investigations laboratory at John Jay, and a wind tunnel lab and aviation research database at York College. We thank our representatives in Congress for the meaningful support of our university. And just last week, we announced general support from the Petrie Foundation for a major initiative to boost completion of the federal studying, the federal student financial aid application. As you know, the rollout of the revamped FAFSA form has been chaotic, leading to tens of thousands of students who have not yet applied for financial aid and remain at risk of having their education interrupted. With one million from Petrie, we will work with the New York City Public Schools and other partners to launch a financial aid support team, or FAST, to target a hundred thousand current and prospective CUNY students and support their completion of FAFSA. This work is underway and will continue till the end of September. The one million gift brings, brings to more than twenty-one million the Petrie's Foundation's support for CUNY in just the five years alone. The consequences of the FAFSA delay and the impact it could have on our current and prospective students' college dreams and on full enrollment and tuition revenue are of great concern to me and the team. We are doing everything we can to make sure that nobody who wants to attend college is hurt by these problems. We already announced an extension of CUNY's commitment deadline from May first to June first to give students and their families more time to make an informed decision. We have a social media campaign reminding students to fill out their FAFSA, and we're working closely with the governor's office, which last week designated April as Financial Aid Awareness Month and announced a large initiative to increase FAFSA completion across New York State. I want to commend Provost Hensel, Vice Chancellor Somiento, and their teams, my the Hong Kong Communications, for really, really working very, very hard on, on this matter. April also marks Community College Month, and our Seven Stellar Community College will be hosting open houses, tours, and a long list of other events all month long. To build on our enrollment efforts, today we launched an ad campaign promoting ASAP, our transformative and widely renowned support program that helps students complete their associate degrees faster. This brings ASAP, this spring ASAP is marking that it has served more than one hundred CUNY students. The new campaign, Go Further Faster, features our very own ASAP advisors, student ambassadors, and peer mentors. Look for it in the subways. I also like to thank Robin Hood, another longtime CUNY booster. Its recent seven-hundred-thousand-dollar grant will support the expansion of our innovative Degree-to-Career Mapping Initiative. This program enables undergraduates to identify careers that align with their major, understand the steps needed to pursue them successfully, and discover paid internships, apprenticeships, and full-time jobs. This continues to build on our transformative, system-wide work in career success for our students. Speaking of career success, I also visited Queens College along with JP Morgan CEO Jamie Diamond for a fire chat conversation with President Wu and Kirsten Barnett, the executive director of the New York Jobs CEO Council, that was attended by about two-hundred-and-fifty undergrads from the School of Business. You will recall that Jamie Diamond joined dozens of CEOs nearly four years ago to form the council. The companies represented in the council have since hired more than six thousand CUNY students into well-paying, family-sustaining jobs, and I want to thank Associate Provost Lauren Anderson for her work in this area. Continuing on the good news, helping students to find jobs of their dreams, thanks to a two-million-dollar investment from Governor Hokel, we will be able to expand apprenticeships for associate of applied sciences students and grow the number of paid apprenticeship opportunities for students, for students seeking associate degrees. On another matter, I would like to report that we continue to meet regularly and negotiate in good faith with the PSC, but I wanted to clarify some information that has been reported. CUNY values the contributions of our long-term teaching adjunct faculty and recognizes the vital role they play at CUNY. This is why adjuncts who teach consistently at CUNY are eligible for health insurance benefits and other benefits, such as tuition waivers, that are not available to adjuncts at other universities. But adjunct job security must be balanced against the programmatic and fiscal needs of our colleges. This balancing is consistent with how public institutions such as SUNY, Rutgers, UConn, UMass, the University of Vermont, and the University of Michigan address adjunct job security in their contracts. CUNY is not seeking to eliminate adjunct job security, as some have claimed. The PSC and CUNY agreed to a pilot that expires on June thirtieth of twenty twenty four unless there was an agreement to extend or modify it. CUNY is prepared to extend it with modifications, considering that the world of higher education has changed dramatically since twenty twenty, when the pilot was agreed to. The fact that CUNY has provided a counterproposal to the PSC adjunct job security proposal reflects our intention to continue to bargain in good faith and our intention to reach an agreement on this critical issue. Some other matters, April marks Disability Awareness Month at CUNY, and we are celebrating the adoption of a groundbreaking accessibility policy passed by this board at its last meeting. This policy meets and exceeds ADA requirements, offering comprehensive academic accommodations and adjustments for students with disabilities. It establishes transparent processes for reporting concerns associated with accessibility and accommodations, emphasizing our commitment to inclusivity and ensuring that all CUNY students have the opportunity to excel. Thanks for your continued support. CUNY is a beacon of inclusion and accessibility in higher education. Last month, as part of a program arranged by our CUNY Arts Initiative, I joined a hundred students on a private guided tour of the Jewish Heritage Museum. We saw an exhibit called Courage to Act: Rescue in Denmark that told the story of how Danish citizens came together to save nearly ninety-five percent of Denmark's Jewish population from the Nazis. Our hope is that these kinds of partnerships with the city's cultural institutions will help foster understanding and tolerance while also serving as an antidote to antisemitism and other kinds of hate. Last month, it was also Women's History Month, and I wanted to thank the trustees who participated in the conference, but the chair did that better than I did. And I want to thank Dolly Martinez and all the organizers and the members of the chancellery and the presidents who participated in the conference. In the spirit of March Madness, I want to congratulate the Magyar-Evers Indoor Track and Field Teams, who won the CUNYAC Championships and went to Albany to be celebrated on the Senate floor. It was the first men's title in the history of Magyar-Evers College and the first championship win for the women in twenty years. And congratulations are also in order to, for the Baruch College Beer Cats, who won the twenty twenty-four CUNYAC Men's Basketball Championship and earned the league's automatic bid to the twenty twenty-four NCAA Division III Men's Basketball Championship. In, in connection to Baruch, I hope that you've seen the article in today's New York Times that called Baruch College "an upward mobility machine and a model college for diversity in higher education," based on a recent report by the American Talent Initiative, a program that encourages colleges with high graduation rates to diversify. Josh Weiner of the Aspen Institute, which helps to run the initiative, told the Times that, and I quote, "There are very few colleges in the country like Baruch," end of quote, "due to the combination of its high graduation rate, economic diversity, and low tuition cost." Last week, the Wall Street Journal also named Baruch among the top twenty public colleges for high-paying jobs in finance. Congratulations to President David Wu and his team. And you can give them a round of applause if you want to. In closing, it made me very proud that our last meeting, when this board voted to make CUNY one of the first universities in the country to designate Eid al-Fitr, Eid al-Ehada, Diwali, and the Lunar New Year as official holidays on the academic calendar. I again want to congratulate trustee Dumboya, who has an editorial in today's Daily News, and her fellow student leaders on their successful years-long efforts to champion the importance of this policy for so many CUNY students. We know the holiday tomorrow is a time of celebration with family and friends after a month-long period of fasting, reflection, and charitable giving, but we also acknowledge that it is a challenging time with the ongoing displacement, rising hunger, hunger, and loss of thousands of lives in Gaza. On the eve of Eid al-Fitr, we say Eid Mubarak to all who are celebrating. I hope that I pronounced that right, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the draft minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting and executive session of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved. Item number two, the Committee on Audit and Compliance. Let me now call on Committee Chair Kevin Kim to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Audit and Compliance considered the following matter at its meeting on April third, twenty twenty-four, which I will now present to the board. Item two A is a resolution to approve a contract with Grant Thornton LLP to provide the university with audit and tax services. The university is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a five-year contract in the amount of four million, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-four cents with Grant Thornton LLP to provide audit and tax services. Mr. Chairman, I present item two A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Let me now call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, which I will now present to the board. Item two A is a resolution to authorize an enterprise firewall services and maintenance license agreement with the Palo Alto Networks Corporation. The university's current Palo Alto Enterprise License and Maintenance Agreement will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and given the importance of maintaining a robust cybersecurity infrastructure to reduce cybersecurity risk, the university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize renewal of the five-year maintenance and license agreement and the replacement of seventy end-of-life firewalls, as well as Palo Alto twenty-four by seven by three sixty-five active cybersecurity monitoring services for three years. The anticipated five-year cost for equipment and services being procured from the, from the Palo Alto Networks Corporation will not, will not exceed twenty-three million dollars.
So you're presenting?
Mr. Chairman, I present item three A.
May I have a second for the item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item three B is a resolution to authorize contract with American Chemical Society for ACS All Publications Package. These publications are widely used within the university by both faculty and students. There were over sixty thousand downloads of articles in calendar year twenty twenty-one and over eighty thousand in twenty twenty-two. The current contract with ACS expires on May thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and the current university would like to renew the contract for a period of three years for the amount not to exceed one million, four hundred thousand dollars. I present item three B for the board consideration.
May I have a second for that item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item three C is a resolution to authorize a contract with OCLC to provide subscription to OLS interlibrary loan solution. These tools, content, and services are used daily to ensure, to ensure CUNY students, faculty, administration, and staff can discover CUNY library materials in one search, as well as borrow library materials from other libraries through interlibrary loan. The current contract with OCLC expires on May thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and the university would like to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed two million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars. I present item three C for board consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item three D is a resolution to authorize a contract with Gilbert International Inc. for building operations, engineering, maintenance, and janitorial services at the Graduate School and University Center. The Graduate School owns and occupies approximately six hundred thousand square feet of space at three sixty-five Fifth Avenue and is responsible for management, administration, and operating costs of the, of the facility. The Graduate School does not employ staff to perform building services and has historically utilized contractual services for building operations, engineering, maintenance, and janitorial services. The Graduate School issued a competitive invitation for bid, received four responsive, responsive proposals, and determined that Gilbert International Inc., a New York certified, a New York State-certified MWBE fender, was the lowest bidder. The Graduate School is seeking authorization to enter into a contract not to exceed forty million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars over a period of five years. Mr. Chair, I present item three D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? And I would just like to highlight the fact that this is an MWBE firm. Glad to see that. Really good to see that. Any, any comments? All right, let's now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item three E is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The April twenty twenty-four Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and February ninth, twenty twenty-four, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains twenty-nine ECP actions, including eleven regular appointments, eight interim appointments or interim extensions, one title change, and nine separations. Mr. Chairman, I represent, I present item three E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Items three F through three O are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members to the executive compensation plan. Item three F and three G at the Borough of Manhattan Community College are Corey Kush as Vice President for Information Technology and Pete Gutierrez as Interim Dean of Health, Sciences, and Nursing. Item three H at City College is the appointment of Ishmael Perez, Vice President of Finance and Administration. Item three J through three K are at Hunter College. They include Manoi Bardasani, interim Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost, Jennifer Tooten as Interim Dean of the School of Education, Pete, Peter Englat as interim Senior Vice President for Communications and External Affairs and Executive Deputy to the President. Item three L at John Jay, at John Jay College is the appointment of Myrna Fornay as interim Executive Legal Counsel. Item three M at Lehman College, the appointment of Kelly Mansfield Brown as Vice President of Institutional Advancement. Item three N, Macaulay Hunter, Macaulay Honors College, is Stephanie Hyacinth as interim Vice President of External Relations. And item three O at York College is the appointment of Eduardo Rios as Vice President of Finance and Administration. Mr. Chairman, I present items three F through three O for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Henry. However, item number four, Committee on Education Policy. Let me now call on Committee on Education Policy Vice Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
I was just trying to catch my breath.
Do you want me to get you some water?
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following items at its meeting on March eighteen, twenty twenty-four, which I will now present to the board. Item four A one is a resolution to decertify inactive centers and institutes. The action is carried out in agreement with the current Board of Trustees Policy one point oh nine, the policy guidelines on centers, institutes, consortia, and special initiatives that require such entities to be recertified every five years in accordance with the policy. College leaders have, have identified centers and institutes that have become inactive or have emerged with other entities or no longer fully aligned with the strategic policies of the home college or lack a realistic path to financial self-sufficiency. The center and institutes listed on the resolution will, will be removed from the inventories of the respective colleges. Mr. Chairman, I present item four A one for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item four A two through four A thirty-three are resolutions to recertify thirty-two centers and institutes across ten campuses. These proposed actions were carried out in compliance with the current Board of Trustees' Policy one point oh nine in preparation for recertification colleges and schools and have engaged in, through a thorough assessment and evaluation of all existing centers, institutes, and consortia, including any applicable governance approvals. The Office of Academic Affairs has rigorously reviewed recertification requests, including reports on the specific centers or institutes' fiscal viability, governance, and continued value. In addition, OAA has affirmed that the entities support the core mission of the colleges and the university. Mr. Chairman, I present items four A two through four A thirty-three for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for the item? Any discussion? And let me just, Chancellor, let me give you and the provost and her team credit for the rigorous review on all of these entities. Let me just thank you all for the work that was done. Any other comments on this? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item four B one is a resolution to award Pedro Mateo Hellebart with early tenure at the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy with an application of bylaw six point two point C two. Professor Mateo Hellebart is nationally and internationally, is nationally and internationally recognized for a significant novel and interdisciplinary contribution to the epidemiology of drug use, urban studies, immigration, social networks, and HIV hepatitis C prevention, with a scholarly record that exceeds the expectation of faculty being considered for tenure and promotion. He is well, he is a well-funded scientist and has secured twenty- and has secured 26 grants from the National Institute of Health and Foundations. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Please.
We're wearing you down, open.
Item 4C1 is a resolution requesting approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. The information contained in the report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves. The report was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First between December 16, 2023, and February 9, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4C1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
And finally, item 4C2 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report. The report includes routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusion in the university's general education program. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4C2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Trustee Berger, you have gone above and beyond. Thank you so much this evening. Really appreciate it. Item number five, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me now call on the vice chair. Is that the vice chair of that committee? Or vice chair of the board, Senator Wilkin, to report for trustee Lorraine Cortez Vasquez on this item. Lorraine had to leave a little while ago.
Happy to do so. Mr. Chairman, the Board Committees for Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting on March 18, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 5A is a resolution requesting the naming of the Women's Resource Center at the Borough of Manhattan Community College. Since 2000, Elizabeth Margaritas Buzin has been an active member and a volunteer of the Borough of Manhattan Community College Foundation and continues to be an avid, active supporter of the college and its students through her philanthropy and volunteerism. Mrs. Buzin founded and became a member of the BMCC Legacy Society in 2017, which is composed of donors who include BMCC in their estate plan. She also made an additional irrevocable commitment of $400,000 to the BMCC Foundation in November of 2018, which was fulfilled in its entirety in 2022, bringing her total lifetime cash gifts to the BMCC Foundation to over $1.1 million. Both BMCC and the BMCC Foundation are pleased to link Elizabeth Margaritas Buzin to the college by naming the BMCC's Women's Resource Center in honor of her generosity and her longtime connection to the college. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Item number six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me now call on Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Oberfeld to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on March 18, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 6A is a resolution to authorize construction for campus-wide building automation system upgrade at Queensborough Community College. The Queensborough Campus Wide Building Automation System Upgrade Project includes a replacement of the entire building administration system for Honeywell, Trane, and JCI Systems, while integrating the newer system into a unified control system. The upgrade incorporates energy-saving measures that will bring CUNY closer to meeting the energy-saving targets and will also bring the system to a state of good repair. New York State and City have appropriated capital funding for CUCF in the current and prior fiscal years, sufficient for CUCF to designate an amount not to exceed $11,461,117. Construction managed by DASNY is anticipated to commence in April 2024 and be substantially completed by October 2025. The program management agreement requires DASNY to comply with and report on the applicable MWBE and SDVOB goals. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Okay, item 6B is a resolution to authorize a lease renewal for the C and D building at Bellevue Hospital, New York, on behalf of the New York Simulation Center for Health Services. The New York SIM is a joint endeavor of CUNY and NYU School of Medicine, has been providing innovative healthcare simulation, education, and research since it opened its doors in September 2011, and has quickly become a global leader in simulation education. New York City appropriated $21 million in capital funds to the university to create a medical, education, and training center for all levels of medical, of the medical workforce. The university and NYU soon reached an agreement to create a joint facility at Bellevue Hospital. In July of 2023, NYU's contributions equal those of the university, thereby reaching the match date stipulated in the operating agreement. The university wishes to execute a five-year renewal option from August 2025 to July 2030. Under the terms of the partnership, the $4 million annual operating cost, which is inclusive of rent, will be split by the university and NYU for an approximate total obligation of $2 million per year. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 6C is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with 25 Broadway Office Properties LLC as landlord to extend the term of the lease at 25 Broadway, New York, for Borough Manhattan Community College. The site at 25 Broadway is needed by BMCC to accommodate the required influx of students in the Continuing Education and Workforce Development Division. The site is centrally located to attract students that are seeking certificates and micro credentials to help them enter and progress in the workforce. The lease amendment will extend the term of the lease by 12 years, commencing on June 1, 2024, and expiring on May 31, 2036. Over the term of the lease amendment, payments will be made in the aggregate amount of approximately $24,581,275. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. The Subcommittee on Investment met today, and I'd like to make a motion to add an item the committee approved for consideration by the board. I'm going to ask the secretary to read the resolution, and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, please read the rest of it.
Item 7 is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2025 CUNY investment portfolio spending rate. Whereas the City University of New York's university long-term investment pool, the investment portfolio, was created to serve the long-term financial needs of the university, its colleges, and their related entities, including college foundations, and is managed through the use of a pooled investment vehicle for multiple individual accounts that include both endowed and non-endowed funds. And whereas the university's investment policy, approved by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the Board of Trustees, in 2018, governs the management of the investment portfolio. And whereas the university's investment policy adheres to the standards of prudent management and investment assets set forth in the New York Prudent Management and Institutional Funds Act, otherwise known as NIMIPFA. And whereas, according to the university's investment policy, decisions on determining the appropriate spending rate for the investment portfolio will occur on an annual basis prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year on July 1. And whereas, after deliberations, the university Board of Trustees has determined that a spending rate of 4% is prudent and reasonable given current economic conditions, portfolio performance, and the need for distributions, taking into account long-term preservation of the investment portfolio. And whereas, in determining the spending rate for the fiscal year, the university Board of Trustees has acted in good faith and with the care that an ordinary prudent person in a like position would exercise under similar circumstances. And whereas, university management will closely monitor the performance of the investment portfolio. And whereas, if the investment portfolio's performance becomes a concern, as outlined in the university's investment policy, the university Board of Trustees may need to reconsider and, if so, determine, alter the spending rate decision. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the university Board of Trustees at the City University of New York hereby approves a spending rate of 4% for fiscal year 2025, consistent with the university's objectives and NIMIPFA.[1690.60]